Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone, to the Board Retreat on January the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are Kensington Hilltop Elementary School. We are starting with our welcome and meeting procedures. Dr. Hurst, can you start with roll call, please? Good morning, everyone. I am present. Thank you, everyone. Now, if you are willing and able, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Hurst, could you lead us in this, please? Thank you, everyone. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, would you please do the land acknowledgement?
Absolutely, thank you. We recognize, excuse me. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yum, Huacmaqar Canaloni Peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you so very much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. I will do the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of the environmental exploitation and systemic injustices falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today, a building of what we refer to as the United States. That is by Dr. Rogers R. Forward, we are now going to go to agenda review and adoption. Are there any objections to the agenda as presented? Seeing none, the agenda is now adopted. I will now read our WCCUSD public comment. This is how to address the board. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person, through the Zoom app, and by telephone. Public comment will occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise, use the Raise the Hand app or the Raise the Hand function by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or pressing star and i accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers permitted. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot access items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comments. Staff, do we have any public comments? Thank you so very much. The board will convene for a closed session. Inside that closed session, we are going to do two things. One, public employee mid-year performance evaluation. And then, one thing, and then we will adjourn from closed session back to open session. Thank you, everyone. We will see you back at open session at one o'clock. We'll see you back at one o'clock. Thank you. Have a great morning. Welcome back, everyone. We are returning from closed session. Thank you for the grace of allowing us to be in closed session for additional twenty minutes. It is now one twenty, and we are going to start our open session. Dr. Hurst, do you have anything to report out or ratification of closed session?
Nothing to report out.
Thank you so much. We are now moving to BD, number one cabinet, cabinet survey result. Board, just for your own edification, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy and I worked together to create a survey for Cabinet. I went to Cabinet to present this survey, and now we're going to share those results with you. Dr. Hurst, could you share your screen?
Yes, I will.
Perfect. If we go to... So these are the questions that we had. I feel the board as a whole supports the work of the district. And fifteen people took this survey. And if you look at it, what you'll see is the numbers are kind of backwards, or the responses are backwards, because I did it zero to, it was a sliding scale, zero to, what, ten?
One, two, three, four, five. Number one was favorable, most favorable.
Strongly agree, and number five was disagree. Trustee Ruckler, you have a question?
I have a point of order. Where is this on the agenda?
It is right under... If you look at your agenda where it says BD, Cabinet Survey, do you see that?
It's at the bottom.
At the very, very bottom. Do you see it, too?
I'm looking at the online agenda.
You're looking at the online agenda, not the paper agenda?
It's not an online agenda.
Go down to D, click on number two, or I'm sorry, click on... Trustee Ruckler, where, where do we, where did she put, okay?
You have to click.
Click on, click on D that says WCCUSD Governance. You see that?
Okay.
Click on that, and now, do you see it?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Hurst, if you could go back to screen sharing for me, please? Okay, thank you so much. So I feel the board as a whole supports the work of the district. Again, one was strongly disagree, one was strongly agree, and five was strongly disagree. If you look, most of the responses fell right in the middle. If we go down to the second question, I feel the board as a whole understands what I do for the district, my job description. Again, it falls right in the middle. Most people who took the survey believe that are in the middle of that belief, that we do understand, not strongly understand, not strongly, not understand, but we have a competence of what they do as a job description. The next one, please? I feel board leadership is focused on district success. I'll let you look at that data. Next one. I feel the board functions, I feel the board functions at the following level. This, the result was like, it went from like hot mess to fully competent. That's kind of where it was. And you see that we're right in the middle. Next. What's one thing you want to see the board accomplish this year? If you look down to the results, the highest one was fiscal solvency.
If I can hover over each one.
Okay.
If you can see it.
These are some of the answers that we got. Give everyone a minute to keep looking at that. Okay, next. What's one thing, what's one thing you want to see the district accomplish this year? Fifteen responses. Go ahead and take a minute to look at those responses. And what's one thing you would like, what's one change you would like to see in the board? I'm sorry. What one change would you like to see in the board for this calendar year? Take a look at those. More positive relationships across the district, to work in unity, focus on governance and setting policy, to not be divided, focus on best decisions for all students, not constituent votes. After budgeting, a look at grading practice such as eliminating Ds to support the equity for grading, and so on. I'll let you keep looking through those. And then finally, what one thing would you like to keep the same with the board? For example, ending meetings at ten o'clock. This one was pretty universal. It was all basically ten o'clock. Keep board meetings efficient, keep board meetings, any meetings at ten PM or before. Keep board comments at the end of the meeting, ending the meeting in time, submitting questions ahead of time, so thoughtful and accurate information is presented, and we are seen as our best selves. Student presentations, transparency and timeliness, respecting time for the staff at board meetings, continue lifting up the need for anti-racist policies and practices, keep the ending time the same. Okay. Board, one of the reasons why this was done was, one, to get feedback from Cabinet, two, to help us set our footing for number two. Board realignment of norms, looking at what Cabinet expects from us, looking at what we can do to improve board relationships with Cabinet, and then implementing those into our board norms. Then, before we go on, does anyone have a question or comment about the survey? And we can make this survey available, the results for you guys to look at, too. We can share that with.
I mean, everybody, collaborators.
Perfect, thank you. Trustee Ruckler, you had a question?
I do. So Cabinet is not fifteen people, so.
I think we had EDs in this as well, and I think we included Genesis and Rosa in there as well. So there's nine executive cabinet members, Rosa and Genesis make eleven, and then you had, yes, and then you had the four EDs.
Any other questions? Any comments? No comments? Okay. Let's... Trustee Ruckler, you have a comment? No, no comments. Let's roll into knowing what we just heard and saw with survey, knowing what we ourselves as board members since two thousand and twenty now, we need to realign our board norms. We know what our norms are. We are, we, at every retreat, we come to this understanding of talking about our norms, and this is another opportunity to realign those norms. What I've heard from Cabinet that I want to highlight is keeping an appropriate meeting time to help value, to show value, because they work very, very hard. What I heard from staff is coming prepared to our board meetings, to our one-on-ones, to time that we are talking with our Cabinet members. Again, that creates value. What I heard from our Cabinet is there's a way to be, you know, you don't always have to be unified, but you can be uniform, right? How are we presenting ourselves in a uniform manner on the dais, off the dais, even if we are not in unity? How are we uniform? And I think that's probably some of our standards that we can talk about. Does anyone have a board norm that they would like to talk about? And this has given us some think time. No, nothing yet coming to mind? Okay, I do want to bring up a couple of things about our board norms or what we can start normalizing ourselves to again. I appreciate the fact that the board members that are in this room, you are coming to closed session. That is important, because that allows us to get some of the work done and make some of the decisions. I appreciate that the board members in this room are coming on time to open session. I think that's very important. Every part of the board meeting is an important part of the board meeting. I appreciate that we're keeping our comments and our questions to whatever the guidelines that are presented, and that we're open enough to know if we have more questions, you can ask more questions. If you need more time, you can request more time. I think that that's all positive. I think that we need to continue to normalize some operational parts of the board. We need to make sure that... And we talked about this before. We need to make sure that when we're getting communication, that it can only be one way, superintendent to all of us. If we respond back, we need to do that independently. Do not respond back.
On the whole.
On the whole, yeah. Do not respond back on the whole. Make sure that you respond back just to Dr. Hurst. We want to make sure that we're ensuring we're keeping the Brown Act. When we just talked, we talked about being able to go to meetings and sit in on those meetings. Three people there. Only two people can talk. Third person talks, it becomes a board meeting. So tightening up on those, the Brown Act understandings, I think is part of our norms, yes. I think it's part of our norms, so we need to make sure that we continue to do that. I think we need to develop a way of speaking to each other openly, openly, and very transparently, and doing that under the guise of kind of the four agreements. I do like the normalization that we have outside meetings at schools. I think that's really good. Like, we'll have meetings like this, like retreats at schools. I think it highlights the school environment. I think it gives us an understanding of what happens on the ground. Those are just some of the things that I think are norms that we need to continue to do. If no one else has one that they want to talk about, then we can, we want, oh, we are going to have intensive anti-racism work in meetings in the district with Dr. Rochelle R. She's sitting in on every part of the district, Cabinet, principals, and the board, superintendent, but and the board. So I encourage everyone to come to those retreats, because they are where the work is going to happen. We are working towards being an anti-racist district. So we have to look at our policies, our procedures, and who we are at the very core. Yes, sir.
What about the teachers?
It's going to float down. I believe the way, and I don't want to speak for Dr. R., but I believe that what she's doing is our work at board level, Cabinet level. Then she's doing specific pockets of principals. And then I do believe that does float down to the teachers. I just can't tell you in what manner yet, but when she comes, that's a question that we can definitely ask her. How does it fall down to the students? And not, or to the teachers, and not only the teachers, but our parent advisory committees, like our HACs also. So that's actually, because again, when we're moving in this change, everybody needs to come together. So thank you for that. I will put that out there for her. We are now at one thirty-three. Let's move to number one, D1. D1 is adopt the revised board calendar for the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, and two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year. If you look at the papers that Ms. Rosa gave us, you will see... Or Ms. Tennis is reviewing the papers. Yeah, okay, Ms. Tennis, I'm sorry. If you look at the calendar that Ms. Tennis has provided for us, looks like this. It's in your folder? Look over it, and then we'll take a, yeah, questions, we'll do questions, we'll do motion, we'll do comments. I'm sorry, we'll do question, motion, comments. Trustee Ruckler, you do have a question, go ahead.
It's a, it's a question statement.
Go ahead.
The first one is, I cannot make the July seventeenth meeting nor the superintendent evaluation. I request that be moved anytime in the week of July eighth to the twelfth, or anytime after July twenty-ninth. Second is, I see we have two CBOC meetings on the calendar. Were the dates cleared with the CBOC?
They are during their regular CBOC meetings. So, yes, Anne. So they were scheduled during the regular CBOC meetings. Once this adoption happens, then we will talk with CBOC and ask request that these are when the meetings, the joint meetings occur, because it won't change their meeting schedule at all. Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
I'll move the adoption of the Board of Education Schedule, two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five, striking the superintendent's evaluation to be scheduled either the week of Jan, July eighth to twelfth, or the week, anytime after July twenty-ninth.
So, thank you for that motion. Hold on one second. Trustee Ruckler, I want to catch you up with this. Trustee Ruckler would not be in town.
Okay.
That week, that the July, the scheduled meeting on July seventeen. So she's asking for that to be a different time in July, either the beginning of July or the end of July. Trustee Ruckler, just hold, want your motion real quickly. That falls inside of your contractual thing, long as it's before the thirtieth, I believe, or the thirtieth, before the thirtieth. Board members, do you have any problem moving that meeting? You're okay moving the meeting, you're okay moving the meeting? Okay. You're okay. Trustee Ruckler, will you make your motion again for me?
The motion is to accept the presented two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five meeting, which really covers July through June of two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five, except removing the superintendent's evaluation from July seventeenth to a different date, either anytime, you know, up to July twelfth or after the twenty-ninth.
It could be the twenty-nine or the thirty, twenty-nine, that's Monday.
No, no issues. As a matter of fact, I think it could even be the twenty-sixth. I can check.
So let's take the, let's take the motion as is now, and then we'll look for a date that fits everyone's schedule. Is there a second to Trustee Ruckler's motion?
Same.
Thank you. Are there any comments? Seeing no comments, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Ruckler?
Ruckler, yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are now moving to adopt the governance calendar. If you look, the governance calendar is in your packet, and it looks like this. And there is a front and a back to that. We are going to go to questions first with the governance calendar. Let's do two questions first, and we'll do two rounds if we need to. Trustee Ruckler, you have questions?
Yes, go ahead. So first, thank you for accommodating me on the last motion. Once-in-lifetime opportunity cannot pass up. Second is there, it seems to me that many things have, are not on this that we might want to include, and I'd like to know how you would like to receive this. Do you want me to just read out what I think could be included?
Okay, so what you're asking for is you want to add some things to the governance calendar? Or are you asking that we want them added to the governance calendar now? Are you asking that they be, their suggestions that you're presenting could be added to the governor's calendar?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a discussion for the board to have.
About how many do you have, Trustee?
I can read out the list, and then we can take a bit, we can take a look at it.
Let's do this. Let's read out the list, but go slow enough to, we can say, if there's no objections, and we can put it on the calendar. If there's something to talk about, then we can pull it and talk about it. Okay? So let's just go one at a time on the list.
Okay. So in January, according to the attorney, there's an annual audit that's supposed to be to come before, and there's supposed to be a public hearing on or before January thirty-first. I don't see that, I don't think.
An audit for what, Trustee?
It says review annual audit. So I always thought that stuff was due in March, but I don't really know what that means. So it's Ed Code, or it's the law, four one zero two zero dot three, review annual audit, page two, from the front memo. So that one, I'm.
All right, so that one would be a follow-up.
The second one is bond refunding. So that's not required by the law, but it is a bylaw, it is a policy of the board. And yearly, we're supposed to look at a bond refunding, and I don't see that on the list. The next one is.
Hold on one second. Bond refunding. It can go anywhere in the year. You're saying that as long as it's done with an academic year or the calendar year?
I would have to look, but it's a once yearly, they have to check and try to recoup savings.
Okay.
So I think some investigation needs to go into that. It is policy.
Okay.
And it's also good for taxpayers.
Would that fall under the annual tax rate stabilization?
No.
No?
I, I don't, I don't think so. I think it's different. Next is the annual adoption of textbooks, so textbook sufficiency. And I don't know if that's Williams' update. I'm not sure.
I think that's referring, isn't that referring to our yearly purchase of textbook, what's it called? Every year, we have to read, like reorder textbook consumables?
Yeah, so by the eighth week, we have to confirm and do that thing where we're, we assure that everybody has.
So that's Williams.
I'm not sure if that's Williams. I, is it, is it?
That's when they walk around to the school, then they do the Williams check. So they make sure every kid has their book, every kid has their book back, or their book, their tablet, their consumable. I know that happens within the first couple of weeks of school starting.
But I believe that there's two.
There's two different.
There's like an internal process where, like, principals walk around each classroom and ask their teachers if they have all their textbooks. And I don't know if that's internal compliance, and that's maybe what's being referred here. And then Williams, which is an outside person.
Comes in.
And county comes and all that stuff. So I think it's twice. And maybe that's that process, but maybe Sonia can follow up with us.
And then continuing on Williams, that needs to come to the board four times a year. It's quarterly. So there should be somewhere in there, you know, Williams, Williams, Williams for the quarter, aside from this textbook sufficiency.
Which one should the teachers send?
The quarterly report is already happening, so it wouldn't be a problem, I think, that, again, to the calendar.
On us, okay, so.
And that's required, you know, that's a law thing.
Board without objection, we're okay putting quarterly reports of Williams on the calendar? We're okay with that? Okay, so Dr. Hurst, that one is a direct change, so we can put those where they come every quarter. Anything else, Trustee Ruckler?
Yeah, so audits in general, I'm not sure where I see that.
I see one in December. Receive audit.
Receive audit.
Under finance.
Oh, maybe that's, maybe that's the end law of it. Okay, so maybe that's the... Maybe, maybe they have it down to do it in Jan, in December, even though it's supposed to be by January thirty-first, so I'm not really sure. Okay, so there's a question on the timing on audits. And then there are some other things. So is the board going to do a self-evaluation? That's for August. I believe the board has any goals for the board. So that's a question. Developing the governance calendar in September. I mean, actually, I'd like to see it done in July, so that they're moving for August, you know, moving through. You know, we some, some, some development work in July and August. There's also in April, the superintendent's going to do progress report on goals, and I'm not sure what that means. Is that another closed session, or is that an open session? Either is fine. I just am wondering if that's going to happen.
Yeah, that's open session.
That's open session.
That's open session.
And then on the board approval of SPSAs, I'm just a little unclear. Is that formally moving to August? I thought there was a push to move it back to, like, July, so that they're ready and rolling by the time school comes back?
Yeah, Sonia and I talked about that. We really want to come one time to the board, and July is bound. But she's having those conversations with principals now, so that is the goal, to get them to us, to all of you, before the school starts.
But would July make sense, since they're not here?
Or May, or, I mean, like, I don't know. I thought the push was like, let's do it early, so that when they come back, everything's approved, it's ready, it's.
Either makes sense, like, the end of the last board meeting in June, before everybody takes off, or August when they return, because nobody's here in July.
Board, bless your pleasure. Board, bless your pleasure. Keep it at board approved SPSAs in that first meeting in August? Or approve SPS, S, SPSAs the last meeting in June? First meeting in August or last meeting in June? Do you have a preference? The calendar says August, that could be the first meeting in August, according to what you're saying. Dr. Hertz?
I, I almost prefer like August makes sense because if they can get it done in June, great. But if they have a new principal or there's turnover of staff and they wanna wait to meet, I know schools have done on purpose, like they met in August.
Mm-hmm.
They have it ready then because of turnover. Like they would have that ability to do so instead of creating it without principle, creating it with, you know,
Without staff.
Half the staff missing or whatever, right? So I would suggest August, um, but.
And I'm not even drop dead married to the first meeting in August. Uh, but I like August because, you know, our schools meet around the sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
Start the, they, we start at the end of August, so I'm okay keeping it at August. I hear, uh, Craig Gonzalez-Hoy, you're okay keeping it at August. Trusty Reckler, would you be okay keeping it in August? Hearing what we have spoken about now?
I would. I would like to hear what the, what the feel would like, you know, like I, I, I'd like to feel buying. What I did really enjoy and it made seem so apparent was to get everything at once. It was like a completely it was a lot of reading, but it was a completely different experience.
Mm-hmm.
Looking at those documents, so I recommend that. But what is the timing that they can complete it well? And that they can be rolling so that in November, we're not you know, figuring out what they wanna buy and invest in, you know? And maybe because they're gonna be so much smaller, maybe they can push those through earlier.
Trusty Christian, would you be okay keeping it in August, the SPSAs? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna keep it on the calendar in August, but the questions that trustee Reckler has, if those could be answered through C O O Johnson, just about the tenor, the, the way that it will look, it will feel better.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that. Anything else, trustee Reckler?
Yeah, so the other thing is alright, budget ambassadors, I don't think that's gonna happen. We're already in January twenty, but um, maybe twenty twenty five, but not this year. Um, the correction needs to happen for the CBSC meetings. We have one in March. So those things get refigured to what the board's moving. And then I wonder if there
the, where it says, trustee Reckler, just give me one second. Sorry for the interruption. Where it says budget or ambassador workshop? I actually believe that we made, under all the community meetings that we've had, and I know that workshop is different than the budget ambassadors class that we took. Um. We took budget, I don't know what it's called, budget and ambassador at University of Manhattan. I do think a version of what we were taught, was taught very well by C B L Moses in the month of January. This particular class I think would probably be pushed somewhere else on the calendar.
Okay.
But it could stay for January twenty twenty five if you have it in January, but I think that what C B L Moses has done is covers that in my mind. Sorry, go ahead, trustee Reckler.
Uh, that's a problem. Um, and then I don't know if this is required. It may be um, not by law, but internally. I think you need to, on occasion, do your actuariales on O P E V. So I don't know how often that happens, or if it's happening behind the scenes and it's just not coming to the board, or like, I'm just not really sure. But, um, that should just get looked at to see if there's a requirement around O P E V that I'm liable to. And then finally, I would like to recommend that the calendar is, uh, laid out starting in July and goes through June because that's the district's fiscal calendar. Instead of starting in January, which is the calendar that the rest of the world runs on. Um, so if it started in July, then it would, you know, align with the, with the, with the district's special.
Alright, board members, um, thank you for that, trustee Reckler. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, you had a question?
Yeah, I've been having a time figuring out where this would go, if it go in yesterday's conversation or this one, but I did want us to have a conversation about C S D A annual conference. Um. Now that I've attended a couple of times, even though I really appreciate the networking, I don't feel like we're getting something out of it worth what we're paying when we are in difficult, in a difficult monetary situation. Um, so I wonder if like, as everybody is taking a hit in areas of the budget, if that could be an area where the board can make a commitment um, as part of our budget to not attend the conference. I'm saying not pay our dues or anything like that, because I do think that we're getting really good stuff from that. But the conference itself. Um. Like I feel like we could cut. Um, but I don't, it's here, I don't know if it's here and then it goes to the budget committee or whatever, but I wanna do.
Well, let's bring it up. Yeah, let's have a conversation about it, trustee Reckler.
Might you have some comments on that? The first one is that I have already limited myself to once every other year because I don't feel it's worth it for me to go every year. So I've already done that for myself. The second thing is that I think as a governance team, we should be meeting beforehand to figure out what our goals are for that conference and then debriefing afterwards. Like everybody, like when we used to do these conferences, you know, like used to go to a lot of trade shows and stuff like that, we always had what are our goals? What are we trying to accomplish here? What are the big meetings that you're having? And then we would debrief afterwards about, you know, like what we found or what, what we're following up on. So I think that there's an opportunity for the board to do that as well.
Thank you. Trusty Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yeah, I actually really like that idea. Um, and I think that, uh, now we all went last year. Uh, my suggestion is that then we minimize it to maybe every two or three years. Um. Uh, because I think that that would be really helpful. We have conversations that we learn about how much such as the strategic plan, our goals. Um, but yeah, I also don't think that would have to be necessary every year, right? So.
I do wanna bring up the fact that after the conference, I know when a group went to San Diego after the conference, you, you treated everyone to dinner and that was the time to kind of debrief.
Mm-hmm.
I know after this one in San Francisco, you treated everyone to dinner and that was the time to debrief also. So I think there are built in opportunities for that post-work. It's the pre-work that I'm hearing from trustee Reckler coming together before going to the con, the conference, making sure everybody's in alignment with that. Um. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, I appreciate the discussion. I didn't find any value in it except for the knickknacks and the chopskis. Um, I appreciated going because I did not go in San Diego because of obligations of mother, mothering and wifing and volunteering, so I wasn't able to make that one. Um. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, can you put it into a, a motion or is it just something that you would like to restate and without consent, we can kind of adopt it?
Well, I wonder if maybe it's, uh, uh, something we can think a little bit more about and then we can bring a recommendation to the full board.
Okay.
Um. I wanna like taking consideration what trustee Reckler mentioned, which could be, you know, a really positive thing, but obviously debriefing has to be in public, right? So we would have to schedule two meetings on top of going to the conference and that time, which is really hard. So my recognition is that maybe we table it and we have a discussion and then we bring back a presentation to the full board.
Okay.
It could be a piece of the meeting. You know, like it could be a discussion item or, you know.
You mean only agenda, make it a discussion item?
We went, this is why I learned, this is why, I mean, I.
Oh, you mean at the, and once you go attend the conference, then come back with the debriefing as a discussion item. We went to the conference, this is what we learned, this is what we said, that's what you mean?
Yeah, okay, I mean, the whole thing can be part of a board meeting. I mean, alright, we have this conference coming up, these are all the sessions or whatever, this is, you know, how we're gonna, this is how we're gonna divide this up. That's a discussion item or an action item, however, and it's on the agenda, it's open to the public. You go to the meeting, you come back afterwards and you have your debrief also in public. It's perhaps an action item. Um, I mean, I thought that the housing um, presentation was really good, actually. Um. And I'd like to share, you know, I don't, I'm happy to share any of that, so.
That's a possibility.
It's a, it's a way to do it. I also did not book any hotels for San Francisco.
Yeah.
I mean, I just could not, you know.
Well, we drove, yeah, we drove in, drove out, but that was just.
It just, you know.
Right across the bay.
Yeah.
But then I'll, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
See if it fits what we were just talking about. I'll move that, the board attends the C S D A conference uh, every other year. And as part of attendance, that we are required to, uh, have a conversation before going and have a debrief as part of a board meeting after attending.
I think that would be good. I'll second that. Board, any comments? Let's go to the vote. Uh, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trusty Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And Smith Folds, yes. Alright, thank you for that. Now, uh, Dr. Hertz, if you could pull up for me, if you have it available, the committee and appointment. Everyone, we have about three minutes. Let's see if we can get through this in three minutes and then give me a little break to have to two oh five, just to do E and F.
So I can motion of you.
Oh, thank you. I'll second that. Board, if, uh, we're voting to extend to two oh five, we may not use it. It's just to extend, uh, trustee Christian, your vote to extend to two oh five?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler, to two oh five?
Yeah, please, yes.
Uh, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy to two oh five?
Yes.
And I'm a yes to two oh five. Alright. So we did have one change and I haven't updated it yet, but the C O C P T Citizens Oversight Committee for Parcel Tax, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy has, um, has so generously offered to be the board member for that. Okay, this is the, the appointments and the committees that we have in front of us. Any questions? Trusty Reckler?
Okay, so does solutions and the liter, uh, the solutions and the safety committee need to be Brown Act noticed?
Solutions already has been occurring. Correct. Solutions.
But you've had board members, you've had two board members attending?
I can answer that.
Go ahead, sir.
Mister Losano Smith, uh, has shared that for solutions, we don't. For safety, it's going to be a public meeting.
Okay, so safety needs to be Brown Act.
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. Any other question?
I do.
Go ahead.
There's a anti-racist task force.
Yes.
Which I don't see on here. And has you appointed?
Yes.
And I don't see it anywhere. Don't seem to see it anywhere previously being mentioned or.
I would probably say instead of, maybe task force is the wrong name for it. Would you consider it more of a committee? More of a committee, um.
So regardless though, do you wanna add it to this list of appointments?
Yes, I'm trying to get to that right now to add it. Just one second. Yeah, 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 it's not letting me on my computer. It's a whole. Um, can we make a note that you can do it in the first? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, trustee Reckler or anyone else? No question?
Uh.
Go ahead.
When will these committees start?
Some of them have already started and some of them will be starting very soon. With the safety committee, we wanted to wait to after, um, we had the conversation yesterday. Because now what we're doing is we're looking at, when we're looking in these committees, it's, we have an idea of the impact of what the decision made was, decision from yesterday. So we're looking to, and Dr. Hertz will be in contact with you to help, um, determine when those committees will start, but we're also looking at, we're still on this journey to March. Right? So I'm looking for them to start right after March because then we have a true understanding of the impact of what the cuts will do. And then we can move forward to, from there, because we're still in the, um, I would like to say the working phase of this from January, where we had to give our list to the county to March fifteenth.
Mm-hmm.
To where we have to approve whatever we're approving on March fifteenth. Then right after March fifteenth, we're able to say this is where we are now and this is where we will be for next year. So now let's start working our committees to problem solve, to get resources and strategies in. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and then, um, the committees like, say like, will you, I mean, will they be at the different sites, rotate, rotate to different sites? And then still have, um, access to, uh, Zoom?
So that's a great question because the last time we had the committees, we were all in Zoom, right? So.
During COVID.
Yeah, it was during COVID. So if you look at the budget committee, the budget committee has been in person, the budget subcommittee has been in person and on Zoom, is also been on Zoom. I would think that committee, um, committee leads have a conversation with Dr. Hertz and see what's the best route, taking in mind their staff, taking in mind the communities want, the need to be there.
Mm.
Taking in mind the physical impact of, the fiscal, the money impact of having it out of sight versus having it on Zoom. So for example, you're the safety lead, so I would suggest you have a conversation with Dr. Hertz and you guys come to an agreement about how you want that meeting to go, long as it's inside the Brown Act.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does that answer your question, sir?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other questions? No more questions? Can I read, um? Well, can this be adopted without objection?
No, I have objection.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm being removed from the El Street High School graduation as the board representative. My last child is graduating from the district.
You showed the same this year.
She is. Will be the last time I can address them as a parent.
President Smith Folds. I wonder if, um, I know we passed the censure resolution and had some consequences, but I wonder if we could, uh, allow trustee Reckler to be appointed to the El Serrito graduation. Of it only.
Trusty Reckler. So.
Of course.
Trusty Reckler, you're, would you want to give? I know you wanna be, you would, I'm assuming, this is an assumption, I'm assuming that you would want to be on the stage and I'm assuming that would you want to give, as board members, we give that kind of the speech part, but I think we do the welcome, is that it, Dr. Hertz? Do we do the welcome? And then a side speech to it?
Yeah, like addressed.
Like an address to graduating class. Trusty Reckler, that's what you're asking for, is to address the graduating class and do the welcome?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, so what we need is?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I mean, President Smith Folds.
Go ahead and make that motion.
President Smith Folds, I know that we approved the board appointments with the change for the Citizens Oversight Committee Parcel Tax, that Clark Gonzalez-Hoy gets appointed to that. But also that trustee Reckler gets appointed to the El Serrito High School graduation.
Second.
Any comments?
No comments, thank you.
May, may.
Go ahead, sir.
Trusty Reckler, I know that since the censure resolution, it's been tough for everyone. And I know that we all still hold a lot of feelings about what has occurred. But I also think that what we heard from cabinet today is that we all have to move forward. And none of us here have to be friends, but I hope that this is I don't know what the American phrase is now, but.
Olive branch.
Thank you, olive branch. For all of us to move forward, um. That we might ask from all of us, for all of us. Thank you.
Um. Trusty Christian, you have any comments?
Yeah, uh-huh. I see you. I see, uh, not, not really, but. I'm good.
I think my comment is that. There was nothing more special than me handing my daughter her diploma. It is nothing. I would like more than to hand my other two children their diploma. I understand consequences of behavior. I also understand grace. I appreciate the ask. That you're asking to be able to hand your last childhood diploma and address her class that I'm assuming you have been with since the very beginning. As we hand you this. Redwood branch. I hope that in turn, we can. Redwood, I can't think of a bigger tree at this point, so as we hand you this redwood branch, I would hope that. We kid a redwood branch in return. Board to the vote. Trustee Christian, we had a second guess. Trustee Christian, thank you, Trustee Rettler?
Rettler, yes.
Clark Gonzalez?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Can we make that change on the document? All right, board, we are now two minutes past. I'm going to quickly do the last two things that we have to do. Which is, uh. The next scheduled board meeting is gonna be at Levanya Dejon at February the seventh, twenty twenty-four. We are adjourning this meeting at two oh seven. Thank you, everyone, community. Thank you for tuning in and we will see you at Dejon, February the seventh. Uh, good night, or good day. Thank you.